Hey, and welcome to the information session for July the 18th. At this time, would you join me in prayer? Our heavenly father, we just thank you. We thank you for blessing us in so many ways. Lord, there's so much going on in the world, but we know you're in charge. You're still in control. And as long as we lay everything at your feet, we know the father is going to be there for us. Lord, just be with us as we conduct business today on behalf of Montgomery County and help us to make our decisions in the best interest of everyone in Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Good morning. Our only scheduled speaker this morning is Sheriff Cunningham.
Can we eliminate that one?
The items that we will consider during the formal session is a resolution to obligate funding to Baptist Hospital of Montgomery to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic. Consider a resolution to obligate funding to Jackson Hospital of Montgomery to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic. Consider a resolution to obligate funding to the Domestic Violence Child Abuse Consortium of Montgomery. That includes the Family Sunshine Center, Child Protect in one place to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic. Consider a resolution for resurfacing Mount Zion Road from Paul Gibson Road north to Woodley Road. Consider a memorandum of understanding with the city of Montgomery, the Water Works and Sanitary Sewer Board of the city of Montgomery and the city of Montgomery regarding the advancement of joint sanitary sewer projects. Consider nomination of Hubert Dixon for consideration as a board member of the county Board of Equalization. Consider an application to pursue the 2023 Montgomery MPO Transportation Alternatives Grant. Consider the Auburn Game Day Professional Services Contract. Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation concerning funding for resurfacing Old Pike Road to Old Carter Hill Road. Consider the 2022 Annual Report of Insolvent Errors in Assessment and Taxes in Litigation with corresponding resolution for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of $5,250 from Chairman Singleton to McCollough.
I'll tell you what McCollough needs is that they're changing their name to Meals on Wheels. And that's why they're going to just rebrand McCollough. That's why she was calling you probably.
What'd she ask for?
No, I think this was PACS. This was something that I guess I never did do back in March for the culinary capers. It was $5,500. I don't think I ever did it back in March, obviously. Unless Teresa tells me different. I guess I can look on that sheet. I'll double check.
No, thank you. I just knew I owed Donna a call about the branding, so I'll call her back. I don't need anything. I'm finished. Thank you.
No, this is fine.
Is this for the Southern League?
Yeah, Southern. I'm gonna do Southern League and you got Bellingraph. You got two of them. Bellingraph is worse off. I think right Doug, in Southern League, you got Bellingraph and Southern.
Yeah, there's two of them that have qualified for the Dix Youth World Series in Ruston, Louisiana.
They're not the only two in the city.
No, they're not.
I've got some too.
Yeah, there's probably.
Because AUM has qualified.
Probably, I know Montgomery American had one. I think Southeastern had two.
AUM.
AUM had one. So there's a lot of wealth going around.
A lot of requests going around.
A lot of requests.
A lot of our wealth going around.
Yeah, a lot of requests. And again, I've already supported Southeastern and Ray Thornton. But Commissioner Harris has a thousand dollars on there for this time for Southern League. But Southern League and Bellingraph is a little bit different in that the transportation for the other leagues, the parents normally will drive them. For Southern and Bellingraph, that's sometimes a challenge for the parents to be able to drive them out of state. So they have to do a bus and they have to do hotel rooms.
Isn't the city providing the transportation?
City's gonna provide the transportation, but somebody has to help them with the rooms and the per diem food per day.
And Southern League sent me out there. They're asking everyone $500 apiece.
From the commission?
Commission and the city.
And the city.
They asked each city council for $500 and each county commission for $500.
So that'll be $4,500 from the city if all nine did it. That'd be $2,500 from us, so that's $7,000. I did get Montgomery American, another Dix Youth Baseball League in town is going to give them $2,000. I talked to them.
Wow.
$2,000 from their league to help Southern League, so.
Well, who is that that's doing that?
Montgomery American or Ray Thornton.
Ray Thornton. Kudos to them.
Yeah. So they're doing that. So if we could do something here from us. Of course, we don't know what the city's gonna do till tonight. That's the problem that we run into. We leave on Friday.
I've given to the leagues in my district, but I would like to give the Southern League $500 from my agency.
Same thing, Southern League $500. But now Bellingraph is different, right Doug?
Yeah, Bellingraph's a different league, different situation.
So I haven't ever done Bellingraph, so I need to do Bellingraph also.
Right, Commissioner Walker, you wanted to do $500 from your agency.
To the Southern League.
And Commissioner Moore-Ziegler?
Same.
From your agency?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit more about Bellingraph, Mr. Chairman? I hadn't heard about that.
Yeah, Bellingraph, Bellingraph and Southern both have qualified for the World Series. There's two different World Series for 12-year-olds. There's Ozon and then there's Traditional. Some leagues play Ozon, some play Traditional. So the leagues on the east side of town mostly play Ozon. Leagues on the central to west side traditionally have played Traditional ball.
Is all this Dix Youth?
It's all under the same umbrella. But again, I think Bellingraph last year qualified for the World Series, which was the first time in 50 years. Southern hadn't been, I don't know if they've ever been to the World Series.
I think they've been once, she told me.
A long, long, 50 years ago. But so it's just try to help these kids have that same experience a lot of these kids on the east side get to have every year when they qualify. So Carmen, what are you gonna do for Bellingraph? Because that is, Bellingraph is your league, right?
Bellingraph, yeah, that's my district. And I've given to Southern League already before in the past. So I think the five to Southern League, and let me do $1,500 to Bellingraph.
And that would be from your agency or?
Let's do, yeah, let's take that from my agency.
And that's the Bellingraph League?
Yes, ma'am. Bellingraph, Dix Youth Baseball. They play at Gateway Park. Bellingraph plays at Gateway, Southern plays.
You inquire, and I thought you were gonna go in there with me because you got kids from your area.
I'm trying to make an informed decision, Commissioner.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, the kids, Southern League is on, they play on Woodley Road.
I heard about Southern League, and I got a call from them, but I hadn't gotten a call from Bellingraph.
Bellingraph is on the Gateway Park.
Let me do $500 for each, each one of those, please.
And would that be?
Designated, don't have anything in it.
No, you don't have anything in the agency.
You're so generous, my generous nature.
You are. You've been real generous lately. Trying to get you again for.
If you ain't got none, you can get more than that if you ain't got none.
And also, there's a tennis program. There's Montgomery Tuskegee Tennis Camp. I think they do that annual over at Alabama State University. $500 for that camp, please.
And that would be, who would be the recipient?
They say, they told me that they had already met the criteria here. So it's Selmont Montgomery Tuskegee Tennis Camp. Maybe Teresa can check to see if their name's on the list. I was assured that their name was on the list. Okay, thank you.
So getting back to Southern and Bellingraph, Florence, on Southern League, everybody so far has given $500, right? So that's.
Well, and Dan gave a thousand.
Dan gave a thousand already. So that's $1,500 today without mine. So that puts him at 25, that puts him at $7,000.
$7,000 raised?
Yeah, if the city gives $4,500, I wish we met up with the city. So Florence, I want to give a thousand to Southern League to get them to 8,000 because that was their budget. And then I want to give a thousand to Bellingraph in honor of my great friend Stan Dixon. This guy's been out at Bellingraph, I know, 40 or 50 years. They all put a statue of Stan Dixon in Bellingraph, much as he done.
He called me, yeah, he called me this weekend and talked to me and told me all that he's been doing great and great things out there.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm sorry, could you repeat that and from which fund?
Just the donated, designated revenue.
A thousand to Bellingraph?
Yes.
And a thousand?
Southern League.
Is there anything else?
So if all of that, if the city comes through tonight, then Southern League, are they, is Southern League and Bellingraph both asking for $500 apiece from the city?
Yeah, I think they are both asking because when Ms. Barlow called me, she really was trying to, she said, you know, she can do hers, but she really wanted everybody to try to help Bellingraph as much as they can.
Okay. So if this, everybody, if the city comes through tonight as hoped, then I know Southern League will be well taken care of.
Right.
Ms. Barlow has really been lobbying pretty hard, hasn't she?
Oh, she, Ms. Barlow lobbies for those kids now. She gets out there and ensures that she's gonna do what she needs to do for those kids.
Yeah, and Renee Casillas has been working very hard for them also. She was a former HOA president in my district and has been pounding the pavement on their behalf as well.
Yeah, and they, yeah, those type of people, they care about the kids. It's all about the kids. So it's a great experience for these young men to have, so I'm excited for them. I went and watched them play Saturday. They played Bellingraph and Southern played Saturday. I went and watched them. And great ball players and very, very outstanding young men. So they'll represent the city well. Is somebody here from Southern? I guess they're gonna be here at 10 o'clock probably. Or Bellingraph? Nobody from either one?
Next is consider hiring a traffic control technician, one at pay grade SO4, step two, and consider travel training requests from Community Corrections. That's all of our items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, just have a question about the item on the agenda regarding the TAP grant. I was just wondering, yes?
Number 11. The TAP grant.
No, it.
Number nine.
I have two different estimates that Ms. Walker provided for me this morning. And I know we, we're required to do a 20% match upon approval of this project. Ms. Walker, could you explain to me the two different estimates, please? They seem to be quite a bit apart.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner, what you have is estimate for phase one and phase two. During our request, we asked for 20% of the total project cost. So that is a guesstimate because we have to have that to build our budget, realizing that upon your approval, we will have to be at the project, which may come in lower.
Thank you. I was not aware it's right here, phase one and phase two, so. They both say, they have the same items listed, so I guess that's where the.
They do have the same items, and maybe this map I have will help.
So Commissioner Sankey, at the local MPO process, you are restricted to $200,000 federal per application. You can make multiple applications, which is why we had to break it up into phase one and phase two. At the state level, which is a different pot of money, the federal ceiling is, I believe, $600,000. So we would only have had to do one application. But here at the local level, we had to do two applications because they limit their funds per application to $200,000 federal request. So that's why you see two different things for, two different applications for what, two different phases for what appears to be the same activities occurring twice.
And would it be correct to combine the two figures for a somewhat total estimate of the project?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
About $400,000, almost $500,000?
Total, yes, sir, but 20% match.
But it's limited to $200,000?
Per, per application.
Per application.
Yeah.
And I suppose that's probably some money out there somewhere else that we could tap into perhaps for this project? I mean, I've been reading about grants from north to south, east to west, billions and billions of dollars available for various projects.
It's always difficult to match federal money with other, well, not gonna say difficult. I lean more toward, it's a rule that you do not match federal funds with other federal funds. So while there may be some funding to offset our match, you know, we can explore that. But this is a project that we think will enhance that facility. And I think this is an opportunity, as we've, I think we've said this before, this is an opportunity for us to go forward in attacking these opportunities that will lessen what we would have to pay to enhance any facility that we would like to. We're going to work with Mr. Williams about, you know, what do we need for our parks? What do we need for our buildings, Mr. Allen as well? In terms of how do we enhance these facilities and not bear the brunt of that cost? And so this is kind of the first dip into that pool to see exactly what that looks like, what all has to be done in terms of getting estimates, turning in applications, what does it need to look like? Do we need to hire consultants sometimes to do a deep dive into the application process to have an impressive application? So, yeah, this is, this is kind of that first test drive to see where that goes. Luckily, the MPO process, we're very familiar with that process. You know, yourself and Commissioner Singleton are on that board. It's a process that we have those relationships with, that we can speak more directly with the MPO staff as well as with the division, the people at the ALDOT Division to see like, okay, how does this look? How does this work? What do we need to do? What makes it better? What makes it worse? So we can find out how do we strengthen our ability to apply for these, get these, as well as enhance our facilities.
And we are preparing to be more as proactive as you just said.
Yes, sir. We want to be very aggressive, not just with our parks and our buildings, but we want to be very aggressive with all things that are going to enhance all programs and services that Montgomery County can offer and has to offer.
Maybe some opportunities as we think about or consider rebuilding Flatwood Community Center, maybe some opportunities to really, really enhance it.
Yes, sir.
The way it needs to be.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Regina, also down at the Montgomery County Activity Center, there's a possibility that we're gonna be expanding our participation in there.
Yes, sir.
With the seniors.
Yes, sir.
And I just need to make sure that we ADA compliant.
We will do that. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it with this pot of money because it was outside of the local MPO boundary, but it is inside the boundary for the state MPO. So as we plan our fall, winter, spring, and summer grant cycle, that's something to look at and plan for when the state MPO cycle opens up again. Because it's a perfect project for it.
Yeah, and we need to put that on the front burner pretty quick, so.
Will do. Thank you.
So now we can hear from the sheriff.
Don't make me hit the step.
Yeah, I've been here in a few meetings.
That's why I had to come down here early and get down here and say, good morning, everybody. Glad to see everybody here. Yeah, but y'all talked about that ballpark for a whole hour. So we can talk about mine for at least 10 minutes.
We can talk, we can listen to you, Sheriff. Come on, we gonna listen to you. We gonna give you two minutes.
All I want is 10 minutes.
Come on, two more minutes.
Two more. Well, I think the only thing I got was this year, the Alabama National Fair. I'm the president of the fair this year. Get round of applause for that. Woo, I'm excited. And with that, we're trying to do some work around at the Coliseum, trying to, our barn section where our agricultural displays are at. The pens are in terrible shape and we need to upgrade them. We have gotten some money from the Agriculture Department to help us with those pens. And so we came to the county with a request to see what you all can do to assist us with getting the agricultural pens up to par so that we can have more of our displays for our youth to be able to display their cows, their pigs, and things of this nature at the fair. So we're looking to see whatever you all can do that can really help us out. We're not gonna cry or pout, we're gonna be happy.
You have a budget for that, Sheriff? All that renovation you're talking about?
Yeah, it's gonna cost us right around $60,000. I don't have it with me, to get the pens redone, to get the wood and all that stuff, to get it all fixed.
How much has the Department of Agriculture committed to this project?
Ah, I think, yeah, $5,000.
$5,000?
All-time Megan Dallas budget.
Sheriff, this is more than.
We'll match that.
Yeah, it's just. Yeah, yeah, but this is not only just for the, for the pens, but we were talking about a sponsorship too from the county commission so that you all be able to entice your employees and your staff to be able to come out to the fair and, and to participate and to take advantage of what the fair brings to Montgomery.
What, 2,000 attendees, 200,000 attendees every year?
Yep.
So this is, what you're asking for is a sponsorship, which would include ride sponsorship, ads on the website, general admission tickets, that kind of stuff.
All that, all that's included in it. So we're not just asking for just the renovation part. We're asking for your participation in it.
Yeah, full disclosure, I'm also on the fair board. I'll actually be president next year, try to clean up the mess that Cunningham leaves behind.
You know I'm coming back.
The, yeah, last year, the Quanis Club gave $300,000 back to many of these local projects and charities here in Montgomery. So it says, again, I'm putting on a commercial for the Quanis Club, but we do great work at the Quanis Club and all the money that we raise goes back into the.
Community.
Community. And so it's, the fair has been a great, great thing for the city of Montgomery. Brings a lot of people here. It's the safest environment for those 10 days in Montgomery. Very, very efficiently ran. And so the county commission has really never, quote, we put, we buy a booth out there every year.
Yep.
And we put our stand-ups in it and that kind of stuff. But we really never have done any type of sponsorship package similar to what we've done for the Camellia Bowl and Alabama State Activities of Games and stuff like that. So that's what the Alabama National Fair ask is.
Sheriff, uh-oh. Do you think, again, I know we are all responsible for where we park at and not parking, you know, in forbidden zones, prohibited zones when we go out there. But you think that may be one night where we could just say free parking for all the people who are attending? Because we have a lot of cars being towed and just a lot of inconvenience.
Where the cars are towed, you know.
Sure. You know, and again, I know they are probably parking in spaces that are prohibited, you know, along the fence and over crossing other businesses and so forth. And I know it got to be a nightmare one year. I mean, I don't know how many cars got towed. The towing companies made money, money, money. So I'm just wondering if that was a possibility, that maybe one of those nights we just offer free parking?
And we can do that part of the sponsorship package. That sounds good.
Well, and no, stop. The concern with that is if you, if you dive into the budget of the fair, every segment goes to a different beneficiary. So the rides, all that money made on the rides goes right back to Wade Shows and the ride people. All the money that's made on concessions, you know. And so the, the parking, and correct me, you guys are the experts, the parking is about, the parking and the entry tickets. That's what goes to Quanis.
And that's where we get our.
So you think it's, it's big money, but all those, all that ride money and concession money.
Yeah, we just get a small percentage of.
A very small percentage. So that, that really, to do that is taking money from them and I don't want to pay, you know, for everybody to illegally park, so.
Well, I mean, just one night, I was talking about to park inside. Because if we're gonna give the money, then we're not taking anything away. We're actually adding something to it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to considering that. But with regard to this $50,000, this fixing up the stables in the arena area behind the Coliseum, this is a lot bigger than the fair. This is for a lot of events, rodeo. We have horse shows out there all the time. So I feel like this needs to be a bigger conversation and we need to circle back to ag and see if they're available to do more than $5,000. What is the city willing to do for this particular project? I know the Coliseum has been, you know, I've been a big advocate for the Coliseum since I've been on this commission, but we can't get a lot of traction to do what needs to be done to bring it up to the standards to really utilize this as a, as a world-class facility. But this is a, this is a good project and we need to do this project. But I don't, I don't necessarily know that we need to do this project all by ourselves.
Well, this is more of a Montgomery County Commission sponsorship.
Yes.
Than it is other, the city's gonna help. I know you help and the city.
So you're saying you want Montgomery County to pay for this upgrade? And maybe you'll go to the city to get, I mean, the city needs to do something different.
And that's something that we already did. The city came in and they reasphalated all the fairground over there. And that's where you see now, we used to have all the potholes. They did the striping, they did the asphalting. And they done a lot on the fairground side so that it, people can walk without tripping.
No, that's good. And there are probably some in-kind services that our engineering department could help with as well.
Same way with lighting. We're in the process, the city's in the process of upgrading some of the lighting out there too. So there's a lot that we're, we're not just coming to the county for one thing. We're going to everybody. Because the fair pretty much benefits everybody here in the whole river region, really. You know, to be perfectly talking about it because everybody comes to the fair.
Yeah, it's all of central Alabama.
Yeah.
And the ask is sponsorship. And the money that is generated from the sponsorship will go to that.
Oh, yes.
That's, so it's not.
Yeah.
There often is something in return. And the parking. There often there's something in return. And the parking on our busy nights. Vice Chairman Sankey, on our busy nights, our parking lots are already full. So it, it overflows anyway onto the streets and people park. Now, some people park outside the gate to save the five bucks that cost to park inside the gate. But most of our parking lots on our busy nights are filled anyway.
And what we're doing now is we're doing the rotations on the parking. So this lot get full, we'll close it and we'll concentrate on this lot. And then the arena gate back there on the back coming in, normally we always have parking places back there. A lot of people don't like to park way back there because you're on the, on the gravel and they don't want to take their cars on the dirt road side of it. And they try to stay on the asphalt side. And, and that's where you run into people not wanting to park on site. But if you look at the parking situation that we do have, we try to monitor it so that when we get fifteen or twenty cars leaving out of the upper parking. We'll open it up and get fifteen or twenty cars in there. And normally, it, it normally pretty much runs pretty smooth. Unless we're having a big band or big act out there and then you may get a, a massive rush. But once that concert's over with, it goes back to normal.
Yes, I was just hoping we could support those who support the fair. Because I know that's a, Quanis make quite a bit of money doing this. And, you know, you have a great time, you've enjoyed the concert, you've eaten the cotton candy and all, you won your teddy bear. And you get back to where you thought you parked at and the car is gone.
Yeah. The only, I know the location.
For people illegally parking.
Yeah, you're talking about.
No parking or standing tollways on them. That's where.
And that's it. Most businesses, most of the ones you're talking about are private businesses, you know, and I can't, you know, you go over and you park in Burger King parking lot or Walmart, you know.
Understood, but I, you know, if we offered like a free night of parking, you know.
And that's something that we can have that conversation. I had that conversation with them and see what we can do.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I don't, I don't have a problem doing that.
Tell us how much, whenever you look into that for Commissioner Sankey, tell, tell us how much on a full, on a busy night is generated, how many dollars are generated from parking?
On parking? Okay. I'll, I'll check on that.
Normally, the nights that we are full and the parking lot is full, it's a two-dollar night.
Yeah.
To get in the gate. So.
Yeah.
Seven bucks.
Or canned good.
Or canned good, yeah. So it's, it's, again, and, and the fair, even when COVID was here, we did the fair. Lost money. We knew we was gonna lose money, but we wanted to keep it going for the community, so.
But we still gave back. During the COVID, we, we put close to two hundred thousand dollars back into the community through these nonprofits. So we still did that.
So I guess, Mr. Attorney, just to make sure, we, if we did some type of sponsorship and we had a certain amount of tickets that was included in the package, kind of like we do with the Camellia Bowl. Could we do a lottery or, or how we do, how, the same way we give away the Camellia Bowl tickets?
I'm not familiar with the, the way that you. I mean, I'll look, if you'll talk with me after the fact and I'll, I'll get with you on that. But I'm not familiar about the Camellia Bowl tickets.
Let's, let's, let me talk with you about that and see legalities, make sure. I mean, we can always just give the money, but if we get something back.
Yeah, and I.
Sponsorship, can we do that?
And I'll get you the information that you all requested as well. And I'll work on that about the free parking.
Thank you, Sheriff.
One night.
One night, one night. That's all we need.
I may just call it the Isaiah Sankey Free Parking Night.
If it's approved, you know, I'll, I'll work the gate.
But, but make sure Commissioner Sankey realizes just as many people are gonna get towed on Isaiah Sankey Free Parking Night as have ever been towed before.
Wow.
Maybe more people will get towed on that night.
We anticipate. That's built into the budget. Okay.
Well, we're not paying for their towing.
Thank you.
You can pay for my subscription.
There you go.
Well, thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Do we have anything else, Florence?
We have a bid award to diversified companies for, to print and mail notices for probate.
Future item number one.
Correct.
Two bidders. Both of them out of town. One of them's twice as much, so. Any questions about that one? If not, that'd be on the next agenda.
We have a second general information item, which is a funding request from the city of Montgomery in support of the Fairview Farmers Market.
So Florence, again, they're temporarily moving the farmers market so they can renovate their.
The existing.
Existing location. So this would just be a one-time, help them get through this rental on the new property and, and.
Correct.
Any questions on that one?
I don't, I don't have any questions. You know, I've already been informed because they reached out to me. And I think it's something that we need to do in the county for, because you know, the farmer's mar, market increased the quality of life over there on the west side of Montgomery. So I'm in favor of, we helping as much as we can with it.
Yeah, Mayor Reed and the city council have been very supportive of us too in the past.
And I think Dean had, I think this Chairman Dean had, they let me know that Chairman Dean was very supportive of it.
Yes, he was.
In the, in the past. And so, and they reached out and I think we should try to help them as much as, as much, as much as we can.
So Florence, that'd be on next agenda.
And the source of that funding?
Fund balance?
So we'll have a budget change on the next agenda.
Is anything else? Anything else from the commission?
Florence, I have another agency appropriation to add, please.
Certainly.
Five hundred dollars to Have a Heart for Children.
And that would be from?
Agency.
Agency.
Anything else from the commission? Do, do we have anybody here that's signed up to speak at ten o'clock that would like to speak now and not wait to ten? Mark? Hey, Mark Hall, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, I have.
Mark, give us your name and.
Yeah, Mark Hall. I'm with, I'm the executive director for Montgomery Habitat for Humanity. I've met several of y'all and thank you for this time to speak. I have a little information packet I would love to pass out.
Give it to my slide down. And the mark to me.
I've been in this position for the last six months and just kind of want to give you a little education. About what we're doing and what Habitat's all about. I'm sure you don't need a whole lot of history, but I've, I've provided that. In the first packet, on the first brochure in the packet, it tells you about our home ownership program. It kind of goes into detail there, tells you what it was required to, to, to be a part of our program. And then also the next sheet is, you know, Habitat Facts. And it basically, you know, Habitat was started in nineteen seventy-six by Millard and Linda Fuller. It was started here in Montgomery in nineteen eighty-seven. We do not rent homes. We do not give homes away for free. We do provide opportunity for home ownership. You know, it's a home buying program. We house the mortgages and we take in qualified applicants. The selection criteria is the need for housing. And I know that, you know, we, we, you don't need any, you know, education in knowing that their, the need for affordable housing is, is huge. And they gotta be, have the ability, ability to pay and the willingness to partner with us. And I'm all, the next, you know, we had a home dedication on April twenty-seventh of this past year. I included an article for Montgomery Independent. As you see, Commissioner Singleton was there and he conveniently blocked me from the whole picture. So that's good.
That was purposefully done.
That's right. So, but no, it was a great event. It was actually raining that day, so the pictures were inside the house, which we typically like to do. You know, invite more people and have them present. But we did it inside the house, which is made it a little more intimate with city officials. And you can see who was present there. Also, some more pictures of the house that we actually dedicated. And, you know, some other information in here as well. The last brochure is, we have a restore on East South Boulevard at twenty-two sixty-six East South Boulevard. That's kind of our, we like to call fundraiser for the Habitat program. We are looking to increase the amount of houses we, we present and just looking for support from the county. I'm gonna speak and propose tonight at city council meeting as well. And I would just like to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I, I've always been a big fan of Habitat Humanity. It's a, it's not a handout program, it's a hand-up program where you have some sweat equity in your own house. It's not like Habitat builds a house and then somebody says, "I'd love to have zero interest loan so I can live in this house." They have to qualify, they have to put time into the house. Regina Walker, who works here with the county, she's chairman of the board at Habitat for Humanity Now. And I attended that day. It was a great, great day. I do notice, Sheriff Mark, that I committed five thousand dollars from the commission that day. I'd like to use that from the joint if my teammates agree with me. If not, I'll be out five.
You committed it from the commission.
Chairman has the authority.
I think you should let, let us get our questions answered before you commit us.
But I would love to see somehow, and I'm not sure how it could work, but, you know, we've got the ARPA money and it's going to critical home repair. Which is repairing homes and, but I'd love to see some way to be able to tie in that for people that don't have a home. That have been renting or living in some type of subsidized housing or something, that they could actually be like this lady here and her daughters. And get them a home that they put sweat into to, to make it happen.
That's right. And, and the, the mortgages that we put these and we, we house those, but they're under five hundred dollars.
On this first inside page of the brochure that says family size, yearly minimum and yearly maximum, are those minimums and maximums family income?
Yes.
Okay. How many, approximately how many, how homes does the Montgomery Habitat provide annually?
Well, we're, we're receiving mortgage payments for twenty-six mortgages.
How many new homes come online in, in a, in a year's time?
Well, currently, you know, through COVID, that's the first one we've done in a couple of years.
Okay.
And due to COVID. My proposal that I want to do and get funding for.
Yeah.
Is do one a quarter. I want to get, we want to work up to that.
And I'm sorry, how many mortgages are you currently receiving?
Twenty-six.
So you've got twenty-six Habitat families in Montgomery?
No, we have more, but they have.
The ones that are still paying. Yeah, okay, gotcha.
One of the challenges it has is that people want to donate old, old homes, but they're in such disarray.
Right.
You can't really.
That's right. And, you know, we're looking to increase our inventory through, I've, I've spoken, obviously, with Commissioner Singleton and Commissioner Sankey. On, on several different topics about our program. But I've also talked to city councilmen about working with me and their districts to, to locate homes. That would be a good fit for what we're trying to do. And when I say good fit, I mean something we can rehab for X amount of dollars that makes sense for us to do. And what I'm, you know, if I'm putting a house and rehabbing a house in a, in a district where the value of that home's, you know, eighty thousand. Let's just say the average home in that, in that district appraises for eighty thousand, then I've got to, I've got, you know, thirty, thirty-five I can maybe put into that home to get it where it needs to be. So a, a family can live in it.
How many, how many families do you currently, individuals or families, do you currently have on the waiting list to enter the program?
Great question. We have, we have two ready and we have other applicants. But, you know, until we increase our inventory and I don't want to have too many sitting there for long periods of time. But we're constantly interviewing Cedric Barner, who you may be familiar with. He does, he's our community outreach director. He, he interviews all the applicants. They have to pass a certain amount of initial requirements with their debt to income ratio and their credit. And then looking, looking at their income. And once he qualifies those, then they have a, a small investment. And then they get started in the program and they can start their sweat equity hours and then they're in line for the next home. So we have a family waiting.
So you have two in the pipeline now.
That's right.
I like the one a quarter goal. What will it, what are the two biggest obstacles or the two things that you have to make happen in order to achieve that quarter goal? Is it making sure you have qualified applicants coupled with?
It's really, you know, it's really three.
Identifying housing.
It's the applicants, which is probably the least, I believe, the difficult. I mean, we can find applicants. I mean, there's plenty of people that need housing. The funding and then the inventory. We just need to increase our inventory and I'm working with city councilmen and other people in, in, in this community to try to locate. Housing that we can bring into our inventory.
What's your ask tonight, Mark, at the city?
Well, the city tonight, I'm asking for three hundred thousand for the, for the year, which breaks down to seventy-five thousand per quarter. Which would put us well on our way to doing one a quarter. So that's, and I've talked to several of the city councilmen about what to ask. And through their advice, that's what I'm asking.
Question. I, I worked closely with the gentleman who was in your capacity previously.
Yes.
We did a couple of roofs over in New Hope Village. And of course, you know some of the challenges.
Right.
I think they're still having over there. We certainly can talk about that offline. But I was just wondering, are you familiar with the Center for Community Progress and what they do nationwide in terms of housing people, eliminating blight? Getting rid of vacancy abandonment, that type of stuff?
I am not.
I would encourage you to kind of reach out, because they were here for a pilot study for the city of Montgomery, the Center for Community Progress. And they, I believe they proposed a land bank. And I'm not sure just, you know, how far that idea got. But the Center for Community Progress is a national entity that really looks at vacancy abandonment and how to eliminate blight. That's all they do. And I was also wondering, since you're talking to the city, have you all identified any properties? Because there's a lot of boarded up homes in Montgomery. Some of them could be rehabbed, others need to be torn down. But how do you acquire the title on all those homes? And do you have the legal capacity in your organization? If we found properties that might meet your criteria, do you have the legal capacity to acquire some of those titles? So we could really, really get that, that property back onto the tax roll?
Yes, and, and, and to answer your question, I've, I've been here six months. I'm working through that process to do that. But to the first part of your question, who am I working with to try to identify some, some, some housing? You know, Councilman Mitchell, I've, I've rode with him, he's met with us. He's trying to find some, some properties in his district. As, as, as well as Councilman Calhoun, you know, as well as Councilman Pruitt. So I've, I've talked to each one of the councilmen individually to try to work with them to, to identify these properties. And I will get you an answer on, on the other.
Yes, sir. And I was just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was, can, can Habitat for Humanity as a national organization, and again, I certainly want to support it. Because I, I represent most of those folks who need homes, I think might be safe to say. But in any event, can you all stand on your own on a national level to get money from HUD? I mean, don't you all have the capacity with the work that you're doing so forth to actually make a direct request to the Housing and Urban Development?
I think we, we, we have not personally, through me since I've been here. But I think we, I think we have the capacity to do that.
So, Mark, an ideal location for a Habitat house, is it a existing structure that can be rehabilitated? Or is it just a, a lot? Start from scratch, ground up?
Well, there's twenty-six affiliates in Alabama and each affiliate's gonna be a little different just from the landscape. In Montgomery, the ideal would be existing structure that we could rehab. That's where our focus is.
Somebody just donates and walks away from it and. Somebody just donates and walks away from it and donates it to y'all?
That's right.
Or sells it to you at low price, I guess?
Right. Well, I think it helps the city. I hope, um, um, but it also is, uh, cost effective to do it that way as well. But yes, it's, I get, there's several people wanting to call, call and want to donate lots. But that's just not what we're, I look into it and see the cost, but cost from ground up is just gonna be way more than rehabbing a home.
Well, Mark, thank you for your enthusiasm. Uh, we've seen your face a lot since you've taken on this new position and we know that you care a lot about this program. Uh, there are, there are people in Montgomery, Alabama, uh, it's, it's important and Commissioner Sankey talks about, uh, housing a lot. There are people in Montgomery, Alabama that are paying a thousand dollars a month for federally subsidized homes. They're paying a thousand dollars a month mortgage to live in Section Eight. Uh, and that is, is shocking. They, and they are renting. They're not getting anything for this. Uh, and I've, I've said it before and feel strongly about it, homeownership in America is, is, is not a right. It's a privilege. So while we want to make sure people get these opportunities, we have to balance that with, um, with income and ability to pay, um, their mortgage and all of that. And Habitat does all of that. And it's a public-private partnership, which I'm always an advocate of. So Commissioner Singleton, I certainly support your commitment, uh, of, of five thousand dollars to Habitat. And, and, and I would like to find other ways that we can partner with you guys. I know that's not a huge, uh, amount of money, but I would like to find other ways that we can partner and help you, uh, in some, in some tangible ways as you achieve this goal of one, one house a month, uh, one house a quarter.
I agree. I support too the, um, five thousand. I would like to find ways that we can work together more with you.
Thank you.
And I've, I've told Mark, uh, for him to, to try to work with, stole some names, Carp Deck, Mercy House, whoever it is, uh, to try to partner together to see if y'all can't come up with some solutions.
Well, we're, I've reached out to both of the ones you mentioned. Um, I've talked to Greg Clark with Carp Deck and we're working. The wording is not, it doesn't necessarily fit, but we're, there is for homeowners already. And we're, we're the homeowners and we're putting these applicants and these potential homeowners into owning the home. So for us to be able to get those funds, I believe the wording would just have to be different for us to, to partner.
Thank you, Mark.
One, one, one last comment, uh, not, not to you, sir. Uh, but for those people in the audience, for those who are really interested in understanding housing in America and how we got to where we are, I would encourage you all to read The Color of Law. I think you would really get a very, very good detail, uh, picture of how we got to where we are. Read The Color of Law, please.
Is there anybody else that was signed up, Teresa, for ten o'clock that would like to speak now? We got a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Chairman San, Chairman Singleton, did you want, uh, five thousand dollars?
Please.
Appropriated today from the joint?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn from the information session, I know on last meeting, and I apologize for my, uh, absence last meeting, Commissioner Sankey asked for an update on Flatwood. I am happy to say that we have plans. And in front of you I've put, uh, given each of you our schedule. Of course, with all of our construction schedules, this is tentative, but we do have plans. We're, we'll be, uh, advertising, um, starting on the third to first. So we are ready to start rocking and rolling on a, um, rebuilt, brand-new Flatwood. Um, our minority business, uh, and women-owned business consultants are here. I'm happy to report that those forms have, have gone to the architect, so they will be in the spec book. So we are ready to go, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, perhaps we would break ground maybe Thanksgiving? It would be good to at least give some hope.
We, we, we anticipate, uh, if you go down to the part F, we are anticipating breaking ground October. So, um, you know, it's taken, it's taken us a while to get here, but we're here. So we're, we're gonna push forward and, and go ahead and do the best we can to get this done as effectively as possible.
Thank you, sir.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
I'm gonna, since we do have a couple of minutes, I just wanna give a quick update, uh, on, uh, Whitewater. Um, we've had a, uh, a very, very good opening to Whitewater for the past, uh, I guess we've been open now ten days. That's sound about right. Uh, we had about six thousand over the opening weekend. That was with rain on Friday night cancelling our concert. Uh, Saturday night, we had rain again, which caused, uh, very soft ground, so we had to move the bands. Um, but we've had good crowds, uh, during the week too. And that was kinda what I was looking at to see after the, the, the fanfare of the opening weekend, how we're gonna look in the week. And we've had very, very, uh, steady, good crowds on, on, uh, the weekdays. I know this past Friday, our two, um, rafting sessions of thirty-six people were filled up for the first two, uh, slots on Friday morning. Uh, the afternoon was half-filled and that, that was checking it on Thursday. And then on Saturday, our, uh, we had fifty-four slots in, in the first two, uh, sessions on Saturday morning. They were all filled. Our Saturday afternoons were nearly filled. And Sunday was a really good day for us. So it's, it's been some great, uh, activity out there. Uh, if you haven't had lunch, I encourage you to go out there for lunch. The restaurant is open. And, um, I think it's, uh, it's open to eight or nine at night, but we've had a good, good lunch crowd. I was out there, I think, Thursday or Friday, Friday for lunch, and just about every seat was taken. Uh, except the ones up, the bar stools up near the, the bar area. But let me encourage you to go out there. Anybody else got anything about, about Whitewater they wanna share? If not?
Ms. Chairman, I was just wondering, uh, and I know that, uh, the corporate district, uh, has quite a bit of authority that was given to them by the Enabling Act. I believe that's correct. And I know we all are concerned about the success of Whitewater. But I'm also wondering about the county commission and if there's any plan to continue to fund that project until they get into black. And my recommendation would be for the corporate district to maybe borrow money or do whatever they need to do based upon the assets that they currently have at Whitewater as opposed to maybe having the county continue to fund the project for an indefinite period of time. So if there's any discussion about funding, I would hope that we would look at what the corporate district, district can do to levy, uh, to leverage their assets so they can become more, uh, independent.
Yeah, we're exploring every possible means of funding. Again, the governor has been very supportive from day one. She's still very supportive. Uh, we're gaining more and more support, uh, from the State House. Uh, today at lunchtime, we will have thirty-something state legislators at Whitewater eating lunch. Um, we have budget here, but I'm gonna try to slip out there sometime if I can. Uh, but we are, there's many, many options and we're all committed to making this, uh, uh, very, very successful and we will. So, all right, we got about, uh, three minutes until ten o'clock. So we're gonna recess for about three minutes and ten o'clock, we're gonna start sharply.